The morning has started.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Finance meeting, September 9th. Want to welcome everybody back. Hope you had a nice August and Labor Day. And here we start. Couple of meetings in September, October, and then we'll right on into our season. So again, welcome back. We'll call the meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation, indivin- individual, liberty, and justice for all. Hey, a reminder to the public that you may send your comments pertaining to an agenda item before or after the meeting to the following email, And as you would in a public meeting, please include your name and home address with your comments. So technically, we have eight items on our agenda. We have two voting items. We'll have a discussion on our own ARPA funding for Fairfield. And then we'll approve our minutes. So actually, we have three voting items. So we will start with item number three. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectment. Resolve to achieve the American Rescue Plan Act's purposes with respect to the Institute of Museum and Library Services grants to states' funds be and hereby are expended in the amount of $22,834 to purchase several items and services that respond to the pandemic, including mobile shelving units for space flexibility, outdoor solar-powered stations, nanoseptic self-cleaning items for facility touchpoints, and a Wi-Fi counting system. One hundred percent of said purchase to be funded by an ARPA grant to Connecticut Public Libraries as administered by the State of Connecticut. And further resolve that First Select Woman Brenda L. Cupcheck is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof to secure said grant. Can I have a motion to put this before us, please? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Ms. Marmion. So this item is now before us. We have our acting town librarian, Ms. Jan Fisher, with us. So Ms. Fisher, we will turn this over to you for some comments.
Hi. So this was actually an allocation. The IMLS provided the funding to the state library, and the state library, through some type of formula, just decided how much each town in Connecticut would be receiving for this grant. So what we had to do by June 30th was just say how we would be spending it. And there are certain fairly narrowly-defined criteria for how we could use it. The main thing would be to respond to the pandemic and implement health protocols. And also to, well, actually, the first thing was to kind of bridge the digital divide. But as for the library, we feel that we are doing that to the fullest extent. There, we don't believe that there is a really big digital divide in Fairfield, and not anything that we could really do with this. So their second thing was the pandemic response and help. And the third thing was to support services that meet the needs of the community, including technology, training, supplies, equipment, and associated things. So we formed a small committee in the library to talk about what we might be able to do with this money. And one thing that we would have liked to have had more of during the whole pandemic time was this mobile shelving units. If you've been to the library, you've seen them right on the first floor there. We have several different collections in them. They're very easy to move. We sometimes change what's in them. We can use them to kind of section off areas. So we thought that would be a good use of the funding. And we're also getting some of those for the Fairfield Woods branch as well. Another thing that we have long wanted, because the IMLS and the state library keep asking us to count our Wi-Fi uses, which I'm sure you'll see the benefit of that. So we were able to find a company that specializes in counting Wi-Fi sessions for libraries. So we've contracted with them to do that. And that's actually installed already. It's working out very well. And then another idea that was suggested was a solar charging station. So we're getting one for Maine and one for Woods. And what they do is just use solar power to allow people to charge their devices at any time. So next storm comes along, everybody's without power. They can come to the library 24/7 and charge their devices on that charging pole. No cost on that, because it's just getting its power from the sun. And then the other thing, to use up the rest of the money, there's something called nanoseptic self-cleaning products, which work with nano crystals and the sun. And they help to maintain cleanliness of high-touch surfaces, like pushbars or door handles, elevator buttons, light switches, that kind of thing. So we're going to get a bunch of that. You may recall that we, our full-time custodian was eliminated from the budget. It's been a bit of a hardship to just have a part-time custodian during the day. So we think that this would help to keep things a little cleaner as well. Any questions?
Ms. Marmion.
Thanks so much. I just, I just need a better explanation of the Wi-Fi counting system. So you're hiring a company to determine how many people are accessing Wi-Fi when they go to the libraries?
Yes.
And that's to kind of understand if you have enough broadband or to what's?
Well, it goes along with this, like, the statistical counts that we do of how many people come in the library, how many people are taking out books, how many people come to programs, how many people are using our Wi-Fi is like the up-and-coming statistic that everybody wants to know. So this actually counts different areas where people might be seated, if they're outside in the parking lot. We had our first report for August, and we had quite a bit of use over the holiday weekend, actually, people in the parking lot while we were closed. So we're finding that that's going to be useful in a lot of ways for us.
I see. So Fairfield Woods, busiest branch library in Connecticut at one point. I don't know if it still is, but then you would also say, you know?
So much Wi-Fi usage is going on there as well.
I, I understand. Okay, thank you for that.
And everything that we're doing here, we're doing for both locations, Maine and Fairfield Woods.
All right, thank you. Mr. Walsh.
Good evening, Ms. Fisher.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. So just following up on some of the questions from Ms. Marmion. Would this Wi-Fi counting system count whether there are surrounding properties that are using our Wi-Fi instead of getting broadband themselves?
Not really. It doesn't go that far out. It's only, our Wi-Fi supposedly only stretches out to the parking lot and the front sidewalk area.
Yeah, but to the, to the back, I guess what I would consider the back on Old Post Road, there's a house right there that is, you know, kind of at the same distance as your parking lot, because it's actually in front of the parking lot.
I'm not sure we would be able to tell if they're there, because they're like, what I saw was a heat map, and it showed like the Wi-Fi point that's in the library in the corner was the one that was getting all the usage. But it didn't tell us where the people were who were using it, just that they were using that particular Wi-Fi.
And at the, at the main library also, you have an office building right next to the library, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Right next to the parking lot. It's 1305 Post Road. The full office building, medical, medical clients, all sorts of clients in there. So you don't know whether any of those are poaching off of our Wi-Fi system?
I doubt that it would reach very, that far with a good signal.
Well, it seems to me that, you know, I go to your library, and I also go, I was at 1305 today having some surgery done, that it's, it's exactly the same kind of distance as it would be from the back parking lot.
Did you notice that you were connected to our Wi-Fi?
I did not. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to connect. I was having oral surgery, so that was the last thing on my mind. So no, I did not.
Okay, well, is that, would that be a problem if it were so?
Well, I just don't know. I just, it would be interesting if the technology that you're purchasing could tell you that, so that you could potentially shut off some users that were in the building, or, you know, there are ways to do that. So, but, you know, it might just, you know, explore, because it might get you bandwidth back.
I can investigate if there's a way to find out if that's happening. I can actually go over there and, and see if it pops up on my phone.
Yeah. Next time I'm over there, I'm supposed to go for a checkup in a week, I'll do the same. And then I guess the, to follow up on Ms. Marmion's other question, which was more of a statement about, you know, Fairfield Woods being the busiest branch library in the state. And I just want to ask your opinion about this, since you're, you're kind of newer to us and welcome. First of all, welcome. I haven't had a chance to meet you, but I just want to welcome you to Fairfield.
Oh, thank you. It's almost nine years now.
Well, it isn't nine years.
Time flies.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, because I usually don't do the speaking, so you wouldn't know.
Okay. So the question I have is, is the, the way you track the usage of Fairfield Woods Library, that hasn't changed in the last couple of years. Basically, there's a gate that you kind of walk through, and every time somebody walks past or pushes that gate open, it registers a person entering, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you, you get a fair, you're still getting a fair number of, now that the school year's opened up, Fairfield, you, I mean, Fairfield, I guess, what would it be? Fairfield Woods Middle School population?
We actually reopened the Down Under just last week with the opening of school. And it's, it's a slow start, but that's typical. It usually is those first couple of weeks of school. And it's really hard to tell, since we didn't have the program going last year. These would be all different kids than were there the previous year before COVID.
But under the system you currently have, so you don't have to use your, you don't have to use a library card to get in to know like how many, like, single users in a day versus?
Actually, right now, we are requiring that they register to come to the program.
Okay. So maybe you'll get a more accurate number this year, because I've been in there in previous years, and especially, you know, after school and stuff. The thing is great. I, I actually applaud you for the program that you run downstairs. But it just, I question whether the numbers are correct, because I keep seeing the same kids, like, going in, coming out, going in, coming out, going in, coming out. So you could have somebody go in there 20 times in one day, and you're, 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 the, the library system would be saying, that was 20 different people.
Well, I'm not sure that, that, the librarians in that program don't actually count the number of kids who are in there each day. They probably count that separately.
The policy is for determining how many people you say are using the Fairfield Woods Library to make it the busiest branch library in the state of Connecticut? I've spoken to people who previously had the director job there, and they've kind of explained, yeah, that's the way it is, and yes, there's probably overcounting going. Yep.
Well, I don't think that we've made that declaration for a while, because it is very difficult to quantify. And I think in the past, it's actually been more based on circulation in that way, busyness of books being checked out and not necessarily people coming through the doors.
Okay.
And the, the way the state report is structured, it doesn't separate out branches in its counts. So when we had determined that in the past, it was just by calling other libraries' branches that we knew had, were kind of busy.
All right. So people entering and leaving the door are not, no longer counted towards how you keep track of how busy that branch library?
There, it's one metric among many of, that determines busyness.
All right. Great. Then if you, in the future, come back before us to talk about that, if you could just point out what metrics then you're using, so that, so that we're clear about it? Because, you know, in the past, it's just been represented to us. There wasn't a metric placed with it.
Okay.
We are the busiest branch library in the state of Connecticut. So it'd be helpful, when that term is used, for you to be specific in regards to, you know, what metric you're using when you say that.
Okay. Well, I think it's going to require some calling around, which is, we haven't done in quite some time, but it's not, I mean, we're not up to speed yet anyway. I mean, our, our hours are still quite diminished from.
Minished, yep. I, I understand that. Obviously, the last couple of years, you know, COVID has not been a great time to measure any type of metric on that. So, oh, I totally understand it. I totally understand your limitations. But I appreciate all the information. Thank you for being here this evening.
Okay, my pleasure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any further questions on this motion? Ms. Leclair.
Hi. Can you, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Thank you for, for the presentation and for the information you provided in the packet. When you discussed that you, you had the committee that made recommendations on how to spend the funds, did you create a budget that you could provide us with how you plan to spend it?
Yes.
And, and then can you? I, I don't see it in the packet.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I have it, I have it right in front of me. So do you want me to tell you? Because it's basically, there were certain categories that were part of the grant, where you just had to fill in on each category, the amount. So personal protective equipment was the first category, zero, because we already had all of that in place already. Furniture and equipment indoors, $10,872. That's for the nine mobile shelving units. IT equipment, software systems consulting was $1,600, which is the Wi-Fi counting system for both locations. Cleaning and supplies, that's the nanoseptic overlays, $3,388. And other, we budgeted $6,976 for the two outdoor solar charging units. But that's subject to a little bit of a change, because the vendor we had been working with was not working out, and we found a better price elsewhere. And I still need to get another quote, because even though the state and IMLS don't require any bids on this amount, the town does. So it's my understanding that we still have to abide by that three quote system. So that's going to be in that ballpark of 7,000, maybe a little bit less. Maybe 6,000, in which case we'll buy more of the nanoseptic.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful. And when, when you finish, get the money, and when you finish spending it, can you report back to us on how everything went and how, how you spent everything?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
And we have to have it all spent by the middle of February. Then we already, the money's already, the town has already received the money.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leclair.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Tistani.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Hey, Jan, how are you? Just a quick question on the budget, just to kind of dovetail off of what Mrs. Leclair was asking. I'm curious, you started mentioning specific items. What you're, and I know you sort of alluded to, well, if we only spend 6,000 here, we might do something else there. Is there a plan you've implemented to figure out how you're going to spend money on different items? If, like, let's say, one goes over, one goes short, like, what? Or is it just going to be random?
Yes, we are allowed to make adjustments like that. We just need to notify the person at the state, who's our grant representative person.
Right, no, I understand. What I'm asking is, what methodology, if any, that has the library implemented to determine how that money will be spent if one item is short or one item is over, or you need more money for one particular item that you didn't anticipate, or, you know, I'm just?
The nanoseptic items are very low-priced. Like, they range in costs from $10.95 for tissue box covers to a giant-sized box of 250 door handle covers. So we have maybe 10 or 12 different items we were going to get. So certainly, any of that can be adjusted. We haven't ordered any of that, because we're kind of waiting for this final bid to come in on the solar chargers.
Okay.
And just that, the quantities of those.
All right, makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of this motion, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it is unanimous in favor.
Thank you for your attention and your very insightful questions. My pleasure to answer them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, we're moving to item number four. To here, consider and act upon a request from the Purchasing Policy Committee to transfer $12,000 from the General Fund Contingency to the Board of Finance Fees and Professional Services Budget to complete efforts on the new purchasing policy by PKF O'Connor Davies. So I'm going to turn this over, but I do want to thank Mr. Dewitt and Ms. Charlton for the work that they've done on this policy. This is, this is a big ordeal and quite complex, and they're working with the administration. They're working, of course, with Mr. Santafanti, our auditor. And that's what this motion will be about. So can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Matola, seconded by Mr. Dewitt. So this motion is now before us. Mr. Schmidt, are you with us? Okay, Mr. Dewitt, why don't I begin with you? And you and Ms. Charlton can kind of take us through this. And there's, there's our CFO, Mr. Schmidt. So, Mr. Schmidt, you want to begin? Mr. Dewitt, why don't, why don't you begin, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, sure. Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Dewitt. As the board will remember, we had allocated $10,000 to Mr. Santafanti to work on our purchasing policies. Last time we met, we actually approved an additional 3,000, which was, you know, extra work that, that Mr. Santafanti had accomplished on our behalf. And to ensure that we got a good number to go forward to completion, if you look at the last page of the backup, there's a, there's something on there called a Statement of Work. And Ms. Charlton and I put together the Statement of Work. And very specifically, if, if you haven't read it, but what it specifically says is, there are certain inputs from the committee. I specifically have names on here, because we wanted to be that specific. So Chris is going to go to the Board of Ed and get comments. Ms. Charlton and I have, have done that. We actually want to have a couple of meetings with the town to get specific comments. But we asked Mr. Santafanti with his very specific direction to give us a quote, and he came back and said, for an additional $10,000, he believes, up to 12, which, which I, I'd almost like to rather say than in terms of hours. It's 40 to 50 hours of work. So it's like a week's worth of work, right? But it's, it's, you know, Mr. Santafanti and his team are experts in this. So we're requesting an additional 12,000 just to cover. And if we only spend 10, clearly, we'll only pay that amount.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Just before I go to you, Ms. Marmion. Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything to add right now?
Oh, just, just, we look forward to working with you and Mr. Santafanti to come up with a good final, good final plan and policy.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Mr., I apologize, Mr. Brown. One last thing. I, I was in, in contact with Ms. Bossy about where we should take this money, and it was the general consensus that we would take this from general contingency, and we'll transfer the money into the Board of Finance Fees and Professional Services.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dewitt. Ms. Marmion.
Thanks so much. I'm excited to see this kind of come to fruition and to get it finalized. My question is really about timing. In the last, number nine, we're hoping to, if we vote to approve this additional funding tonight, we hope to have this in front of the new policy in front of the board by November. Is that correct? And I'm just thinking timing, and then when it would be implemented.
Yeah, great question. Oh, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Mr. Dewitt?
Yeah. Great question. We, we specifically asked Mr. Santafanti to put down a timeline. He, he is, he's kind of working on this right now, still in the background. And he expected that with the coordination with Mr. Foley in, in Town Hall, that he believes he could be done by October 31st. So our, our November meeting, we could, we could be voting on this.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marmion. Ms. Leclair, and then Mr. Walsh.
Um, thank you. What I don't see in the, the last page, the SOW, is if it's going to come to the Board of Finance or the Audit Committee to review before it comes to us for the November vote. So I see like the, the Board of Ed has it, gets to review it, and the town is going to review it. But shouldn't we also review it in prior, in prior years when we, going back to like, I guess, 2011, when we approved the last changes, we reviewed it several times before it was actually voted on?
Yeah, you know, good, good, good point. The, this Statement of Work, of course, was meant for, for Mr. Santafanti. So his, where, where his input is needed, so when he's got to review with the Policy Committee, clearly. The town and the Board of Ed, he'll have to review with. You know, the Policy Committee, certainly, I could speak for the, for that, that committee. We'd be happy to review with the Audit Committee. I mean, your, your chairman of your Audit Committee is on, on this committee too, so there's, there is some overlap. But just because it's not on there does not mean that we wouldn't, we want to bypass any, you know, any approvals or any, any reviews.
Um, Mr. Chair, can I just add on to that? Yeah, I think part of the, you know, part of the goal here of having the date, Mary, was just to make sure that we had, you know, a commitment for a deliverable. I think, you know, when we don't, sometimes these things tend to drag on for a long period of time. Think, you know, the, the DPW Audit was an example of that, and it just, you know, it got into, you know, a very lengthy timeline. So, you know, I, I think the key is to have the, the draft from him on a definitive timeline that he can commit to. And certainly, you know, that process should include, you know, vetting with the appropriate people at the town and the Board of Ed. But, you know, if there's additional time necessary for committees or this board to review it, I, I think that would be, you know, totally appropriate if, if that's what's needed. You know, again, I think this was more to just make sure that we had something other than an open-ended timeline from him to do this work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh.
Sorry, I was muted. So, yeah, I, I guess I've got some of the same concerns of Lori just mentioned and Mary just mentioned. You know, he's coming in with his report towards the end of October. I think there's gotta be some serious conversations with that report, and I'd like to see the town involved in the process at that point, trying to find a solution that works for everybody. And then it goes through the proper committee. So I, I don't wanna bind us to think that this is gonna happen in November. Because if Joe comes back with a report, and it's gonna require us to hire four other employees, we're really gonna have to have a serious conversation about, you know, what is gonna, what's gonna be needed. And I think at some point, instead of wasting everyone's time, maybe the committee should come back, if they're butting heads with the administration for certain reasons, to the whole board, and we can talk about it there, so that we can do the best with moving this forward, and the committee can understand what the majority of the board wants to do at that point in time. So we're spending some money here, and I'd just like to get the best product out of it. I think the committee's done a great job, and I think we're gonna get a great project, product out of this whole thing. And I hope it's in concert with the town, who runs the stuff on a day-to-day basis, who to come up with the most efficient process, then one we can move forward in the next twenty years or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Dewitt?
Yeah, i- if I may, so, so thank you for that, Mr. Walsh. So Mr. Santafanti's deliverable is, is, is not a report, it is the actual policy, you know, just, just so we're all, we're all clear, right? And there, there should not be any additional manpower. Now, now, what could, there, in this, there's one scenario, so he could say, hey, listen, you know, we wanna fill out five thousand forms before we buy a pen, and that might cause, you know, us to hire thirty people, right? Clearly, that is not the intent of Mr. Santafanti, nor, nor this committee, nor Mr. Foley, for, 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 for that, for that matter. So I don't expect this to drive a manpower request, and we certainly wanna work with Mr. Foley and all of the department heads, you know, to make sure that they understand what this policy is all about, and, and the reason why we're doing it. I mean, Joe did a very good job, Mr. Santafanti did a really nice job of saying, we wrote this paragraph to address this audit item, you know? And that's the, the data we didn't have before, and that's, that's a very important document to trace back to, is that, is that audit.
My concern is that I agree with you, that's, I agree that you guys are all thinking about it from the finance side, which I appreciate, but I love working with all you guys. But, you know, I draft policies and procedures for my company all the time, and I, there's unintended consequences sometimes. So I, I think I'm doing a great business job, too, like coming with some nice streamlined, clear policy and procedure. And then I hear from our accounting department that there's four things I don't know, and how that's gonna slow things down. I hear from general managers, how I'm gonna screw their life up with this, and they're willing to participate. We always get down to what we need to do, but I'm just saying, sometimes I might not be thinking about it, the same way the people who are the boots on the ground. Thank you.
Yeah, valid one.
Ms. Charlton?
Yeah, I'll just add one thing, and, and I appreciate Mr. Walsh's comments, because there has to be a, a level of pragmatism to this. We can't, you know, put a hundred dollar worth of controls around a, you know, five dollar item, you know? And, and so as an example, and, and I actually think that there may be an opportunity with this policy to get more efficient, and hopefully to improve service levels. Because, you know, one example, right now, we have thresholds that are, you know, we have, three thousand dollars needs various approval levels, you know? And I think one of the things that you hope to accomplish with a policy like this is to, is to look at risk. And, you know, normally, you know, you know, twenty percent of the items are eighty percent of the dollars, that sort of thing. So, you know, one of the, one of the items that clearly has to be looked at with the, when the policy is redrafted, is to adjust those thresholds with metrics that make sense, that make sure that, you know, we are, we have the right controls and the review authority over a significant number of dollars that flow through the town without looking at every single small item. So ideally, here, we get to an answer that not only strengthens controls, but can help to drive efficiency and make life a little bit easier for not just the purchasing department, but their clients, which is all the people that work for the town and have to procure these goods and services. So, you know, I, again, appreciate your, your comments. I think they're spot on, and, and that is very much the intent. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Ms. Kupchak, you're up behind the podium, would you like to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And, and I, I appreciate Mr. Walsh's comments. Obviously, we need to be engaged in this process. I tried very hard when I started the working group to have the Board of Finance work with us and our finance department and our purchasing department, so we were kind of all on the same page. And I, I, I think Mr. Walsh's idea about a, you know, working more together on the early parts of it, so that we are engaged and we aren't having some unintended consequences, as Mr. Walsh illustrated in his experience. Because that could very well happen. And I, and I think the Board of Ed, too, is going to have a lot, probably even more, input and concern about certain things. You know, we wanna be engaged in this process, because at the end of the day, we actually have to live it, and we don't wanna slow the wheels of government down. I've been trying very hard the last two years to speed the wheels up a bit and create efficiencies, and adding the person in our purchasing department has been definitely helpful in the last budget cycle. So I just wanna just, you know, raise my hand and say, we're here, and we wanna be involved and engaged in all parts of it as it moves forward. You know, I just don't wanna have that scenario where a document gets dumped on us and says, okay, what are your thoughts in like, you know, a couple of days? Because that's, you know, obviously, there is no real, and I, I've shared this with the chairman before, there is no anything written, so to speak, that says the town has to follow a purchasing policy established by the Board of Finance. And that's why it's important that we work together, so we do have an actual purchasing policy that we wanna follow, that we can follow, and that makes, it puts the right controls in place, but also allows our staff to do their jobs in an efficient. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to have a chance to speak.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Just, just a couple comments of my own. Is, is my understanding that the committee always intended to get feedback from the administration. This, this number one, and, and that'll happen before the final draft. Number two, the policy, as, as we're all aware, is, is intended to protect this town from any more fiascos that we've been through, namely, namely the Phil pile, right? That's really what brought this, this around for us to review the purchasing policy, because there, there were holes in it. We're doing our best as a committee and as a board to fix those holes, and this board does have some oversight in that. So, but I agree with, with the committee, it has to be pragmatic, and it has to protect the town. And I think working together, we will, we will certainly get there. And I, I do think this is money well spent, and look forward to, you know, I, I hope, I hope, you know, if it can't happen by November, I guess it can't happen by November, but I think that's a good goal, and, and, but better to have what we're all looking for and what we need, but it still gives us a couple of months to try and meet that goal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that is unanimous in favor of the transfer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this takes us to item number five. Discussion on ARPA Funding for Fairfield Prior to the Vote on September twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. So I requested, you know, as chairman, that we add this item to the agenda tonight, because it was relatively light agenda, and it gives us time to have a discussion about the ARPA funds. So just a couple, couple of points. So we'll, we'll take this opportunity to review the list of items as recommended by the First Select Woman in regards to the investment slash spending of these ARPA funds. As you recall, recall, there was a public meeting on July nineteenth, where the First Select Woman outlined her and the administration's thoughts on how to best utilize the funds of twenty-five million dollars for the benefit of the town. There are six categories on the list, covering social services, public safety, economic development, recreation and culture, environment, and infrastructure. So a wide, a wide net. There are items on this list that have been on the waterfall, and they're identified on the worksheet in our, in our backup as CIP, and we're going to be bonded if approved. And there are items that are new and cover one of the six categories that were requested from various town entities for our investment consideration. So over the past week, questions were submitted to the First Select Woman and the administration by the Board of Finance for further information on the list and for some backup. So we'll have the opportunity to revisit those questions and have that follow-up. So tonight, we will begin by offering Ms. Kupchak the opportunity to make a statement, and then we're gonna ask our town attorney, Mr. Jim Baldwin, to give us his legal opinion on the voting process. He is with us tonight. At that point, we'll turn it over to our board for questions and clarification. And here's what I am proposing and, and plan on doing. We have a quarterly meeting scheduled for the twenty-first. So I'm gonna propose that we move that quarterly review meeting, which has the potential to take a lot of time, as there's a lot to review, because it's also a year-end meeting, from the first, twenty-first to the twenty-ninth of September. The capital planning workshop right now is scheduled for the twenty-ninth of September, and it is, and we were going to postpone that to sometime in October regardless. So on September twenty-first, voting on these list of items and having that discussion on the vote will be the only item on the agenda for the twenty-first. And that should give us plenty of time to ask further questions and hear public comment and vote. I wanna give this board the opportunity to ask questions and get information, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have that discussion as tonight evolves. So with that said, Ms. Kupchak, before we begin as a board, we introduce Mr. Baldwin to make his comments and give us his legal opinion on our voting process. I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, to me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, to you, Ms. Kupchak.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Okay, just for an, for an opening comment. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to follow up with questions, you know, and I do wanna appreciate, I do wanna acknowledge those members who sent questions after the July nineteenth, which was quite a while ago, questions to me that I had encouraged at the workshop, either through email or through phone calls, from either the Board of Finance and RTM, who sent extensive questions on items, and we were able to get them that information. So that was very helpful. And as I had indicated, you know, we are trying to get this done so that we can, that we start getting our shovels in the ground, so to speak, so we, we're not leaving money on the table with the deadline. So I do appreciate those members who did take the time to get their questions to us ahead of time, so that we could get them their answers. And we are available tonight to answer as many questions as the board has. So thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. So, Mr. Baldwin, Attorney Baldwin. So the board had a few questions for you about the voting process itself. In particular, you know, are we voting as a package or by line item? Can a board member make a motion to reduce or eliminate an item, and, and other such questions in regards to, you know, how, as a board, we, we'll go about this, and to come up with, with a vote and a decision. So I'd like to turn it over to you for your opinion, and after that, on those couple of questions, anything else you might like to add, and then I'll open up to the board for questions back to you. So thank you for being here tonight.
My pleasure. Good evening, everyone. Let me start by saying that this is certainly an unprecedented situation, and it's had me a bit befuddled, quite frankly, when I'm trying to apply our charter, state statute, ARPA guidelines, grant policy guidelines, and, and look for an answer to the questions that we're all interested in, that you just mentioned about how this is to be voted, what boards should be voting on it, whether it should be the Board of Finance at all, whether it should be both the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM, et cetera. And, and the honest answer is that there is no clear charter provision, there is no clear statute, and there is no clear ARPA mandate or town grant policy which addresses the situation that the town is now facing, where it's getting twenty-four and a half million dollars or so, in money that it, it did not apply for, as you would with a grant. It's just a, a dump of, of money that is required to be used for certain items, although the, the guardrails, as they describe the, the guidelines and particular uses are rather broad. So struggling and looking at all those items, I could make an argument for saying that the budget process should be followed here. I could make an argument for the grant policy should be followed here, but the one that fits best, in my opinion, is the one that is the same that gives you the authority to transfer monies from surplus or contingency to other uses upon the request of a particular department. And that is set forth in Connecticut General Statute seven dash three forty-eight, which sets forth those guidelines. And that's, that's what you, as a board, have done traditionally. You're all very familiar with that situation. When there is a surplus, you just did it tonight, and you transfer funds. That transfer typically does not go to, or to my knowledge, it never goes to the RTM, but it, it's a, it's a piecemeal situation. And so this is understandably different, and we've had discussions with the leadership at the RTM, and understandably, they see it different from the situation where, for example, with the library grant you had, you heard tonight, where there was a deposit of funds that wasn't necessarily applied for, but had certain guidelines. I think it's a good analogy. Is that truly a, a grant situation? And, and is it something that this board needs to consider in terms of the overall package of the twenty-four point four million dollars? You know, is that, is that something that we should be doing here tonight, and just saying, look, are we gonna accept this grant? And if so, here's what we propose to use it on, and we make one vote, as you did tonight? I, I think the consensus is that that's not the appropriate way to handle the situation, and that's why I, I look at that state statute that gives you the power to make transfers from surplus funds or contingent funds upon the request of a particular department, which you essentially have before you now, and you can approve those or deny them. So the short answer is, is that this board has the right to approve the request being made, or to deny the request on a individual basis, based on each item being presented. That's the, that's the short answer. What happens from here in terms of the RTM, I'll let Madam First Select Woman address that a little further, because that, that is still a question, and, and the, the real question there, if you're following me, is what rights do they have? If they, if it does go to them, what vote do they have? Is it, they have none under the statute that I'm referring to, but under the budget process, they have the right to cut, but not add, not transfer, et cetera. So we're grappling with that, and, and I think that, that we're gonna make it work for both boards, and both the Board of Finance and the RTM, but with respect to yourselves, this body- But with respect to yourselves, this body, you can make a motion as an omnibus motion for all projects. I would suggest you do it that way, rather than individual resolutions for each one, since it's been fully vetted. And then if anybody wants to address a particular item, the, the motion to amend and thereby discuss that particular item would be appropriate at that time. And the board can do as it sees fit. I hope you follow, I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you, Attorney Baldwin. First, as far as tonight goes, I like to keep most of our questions to the Board of Finance and not to the, to the RTM. You know, you have to figure that one out. I'm concerned about our role as a board. And the way I see it, yeah, it's a, it's a list of items of $24,790,000. And if we can make amendments. So, so the way I see it is it comes to this board as such. As long as the Board of Selectmen votes on it as such. And then what you're saying is each board member can make an amendment to any one of the line items. To, I guess, to eliminate, to reduce, or to increase. And then the board will vote on that amendment. Is that, is that what I hear you saying?
That's correct. And it's just my recommendation that you, you present it as one single motion and handle it that way, just for, for simplicity's sake and for efficiency's sake. If you wanted to, you could take each one on a separate motion, as if it were, each one were that separate request. But that's just my recommendation. You don't have to follow that.
No, I would agree with your recommendation. Me personally, I would agree with that recommendation. I, I just have a question in regards to a particular item, but me, I might be getting ahead of myself. You know, when it comes to an approved item and it starts to go, oh, let's say, we approve an item for $1 million. And we find in six months from now, you know what? The item that we approved for $1 million is going to turn to 1.3 million. What, what are our options then if other of the items had, we haven't spent? And can we, can we transfer as long as a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen? Or do we need a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen or the First Select, Selectwoman to transfer one item that we voted on as, as a whole, let's say $60,000? But we want to move that $60,000 to an item that is underfunded?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that that fits the situation that, that would apply. If you, if you had already appropriated, approved the appropriation and the, the, the funding for that $60,000 item, if I'm following you, you've already approved it. I don't believe that you can rescind it, which is essentially what you'd be trying to do in order to cover that which now needs another $30,000 or $300,000, whatever the number is. I, I don't believe you could do that.
Okay, so we would have to find other means of covering that $300,000.
Right, you would have to, you would have to follow the same process that I described earlier, that you typically do when a department comes to you and they need additional funds for whatever reason, some emergency reason, some unforeseen reason. They come to the administration and the administration or the department through the administration comes to you, the Board of, the Board of, first the Board of Selectmen have to recommend it, then it comes to the Board of Finance for your consideration and approval.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to our board now, Attorney Baldwin. So I'll start with Ms. Marmian.
All right, sorry about that. Thank you very much for, for that information. My question is, I understand, I followed what you were saying, but can this board create a fund, a contingency fund, going to what our chairman, Mr. Brown, was saying? If, for example, that's not on the list, but a fund that might be there to, to have some flexibility in terms of funding things that go over? In other words, can we create a line item? A separate line item, not something that's been proposed by the administration, as an example, to give us some flexibility?
Yeah, I, I think another way of looking at that question is you, you don't need to spend it all now.
Right.
Is one way to put it. And I, I believe that under the ARPA guidelines, although Mr. Schmidt can address this more clearly, I believe that you're required to have an accounting clearly, and there are quarterly statements that need to be reported. And I would be surprised if you weren't required to keep all the funds in a separate account, per se. So if you don't expend all the funds, then by virtue of that, you would have additional funds in that account, that ARPA account, from which you could use for an appropriate purpose. Does that answer your question?
It does, because, you know, it's, if we make amendments to each line item, if that's the way we end up going, you know, and yet we want to add up to the total amount, what are we going to do with that excess amount? And, you know, how do we, you know? And who knows what's going to happen next year in terms of everything that's going on, in terms of things we might want to think ahead of time? I understand it has to be shovel ready, but we, we don't know. So is there an opportunity to create, you know, a fund that we account for, obviously, that's sort of used in contingency? So, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll also remind the board that these funds must be designated no later than December 31st, 2024. So that's a good period of time before you actually designate the funds. And, and I'll let Jared, Mr. Schmidt, speak to the fact. Is there another round of funding that's coming, or is this that I'm not sure? And, and not, not sure if that kind of fits into where you're going there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matola.
So if, if I'm hearing you correctly, Jim, we could theoretically go through this list and let's say we agreed to fund 10 of the items on the list. But we maybe aren't quite there yet on some of the other items. We could, you know, we fund the items that we agreed to and vote on. And then at a later time, revisit some of these other items. And, you know, maybe we need some more information, or maybe things change, or we don't want to go in that direction. Maybe even the administration doesn't want to go in that direction. That, that's something that we, we can do, if I'm following you correctly.
That, that's correct, John, to the, to. But, but you have to remember that you're not the ones to initiate the request. So, so we have to, we have to be careful there. You have to remember that the, the request is initiated by the department slash the administration and, and not by the Board of Finance.
Okay. I just, and the reason why I rate that is I've noticed even just from the July meeting, there's some items that are different on this list, like the Wakefield Boys and Girls Club. And that's a good thing. And I guess my point is, since we have, and I'm not saying we're going to do this necessarily, but I, I think we should have a certain degree of flexibility. That's all I'm saying. And, you know, there might be something in two months, three months that we discover that we want to use these funds to fund. So that, that's all I'm saying. And then I, I know Mr. Brown wants to focus on the Board of Finance and what our role is. But as a, as a member of the Board of Finance, I want to make sure, as you do also, Mr. Baldwin, that we're giving, we're giving appropriate legal deference to the role of the RTM here. And I, I understand you, it's a little confusing. But it, in my, in my book, we have $24 million that we have been given. I, I think that the RTM has to have some role here. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're, you're, you're addressing that issue along with the, the First Selectwoman, it sounds like. And that, because that, I think that's important to everyone in the town. So I just wanted to throw that out there also. So thanks.
You're welcome. I'd like to respond to that, though, John, because we all thought the same thing. We, we, we just assumed that that was kind of baked into the ARPA process, like so many grants that we get that require legislative approval. And that's not the case here. So if you look at the actual charter and the role of the RTM, it's all budget. And if you look at the statute that I, I referenced, and the one that you use all the time as a Board of Finance to approve these transfers from, from the surplus fund or contingency, which never go to the RTM, then, then you start to, you can't help but ask the question, what is the legal basis for presenting it to the RTM? And, and this is unprecedented. And so we're in uncharted waters and, and we're, we're trying to, to figure that out. And, and, yeah, it's a lot of money not to be considered by that body, but to what extent they are legally allowed to considered, that is, is still to be determined, quite frankly.
So, so I, and I appreciate that. So what I would say to, to that is, to me, and, and I haven't studied it, like you've, you've started to look at it. To me, these funds are more akin to grant monies. And the RTM does vote, we have an item on tonight's agenda. They vote on grant monies. In fact, item number three, at the end of the motion, it said, you know, it has to go to the RTM also. To, to me, they're more akin to grant monies as opposed to surplus or contingency monies. That, that's all. And maybe that's, I'm giving you my legal advice. Maybe that's what you need to look at a little bit more.
Look, I, I'd like to, I'd just like to pick up on that, if I may, because, one, I'm very familiar with the grant policy, but I have no idea of the legal basis for that grant policy, quite frankly. And I'm, I'm not here to, to, to say that it shouldn't be followed. But again, looking at the statutes and looking at the charter and, and, and the basis for the RTM to approve all grants, in my view, has no basis other than the fact that many, if not most, grants require legislative approval. So that may be the, the reason behind that grant policy as it's written. But here, we never applied for it. If you look at the grant policy, that policy talks about the application process, justification to the administration, the Board of Selectmen consider it and approve it, and then it goes to the Board of Finance, then the RTM. You know, it just, it's, it's a round peg in a square hole. It doesn't fit. So I, I, I'm not disagreeing that you could make that argument, that it's more like a grant policy. All I'm saying is that I think that it's most analogous to that situation set forth in the statute. And I'm not saying that that's what must be followed. I'm just explaining my legal analysis thus far.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to getting some more. And, and, and I would ask, just for our benefit, that when you're ready to do what you need to do, you could give us a, a legal opinion on it too, Mr. Baldwin. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matola. Yeah, and look, my point was not to disregard the RTM. I just don't want our questions to start to morph into the legal analysis of the RTM. I like to get our legal analysis to the Board of Finance answered, our questions answered. And then we could certainly talk about the RTM and their role. So I'm just asking that we keep our questions in regards to the Board of Finance, for now at least, to make sure we don't run out of time. And then we could, if, if there's further questions or discussions about the RTM, we can be sure to have that. So with that said, I'll go to Ms. Charlton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Baldwin, thank you. That was insightful and, and helpful. I think you made some good points about why this is not exactly like a grant. I have to say, though, I'm also struggling to analogize this to contingency and surplus and how this board operates in that regard because contingencies and surpluses arise out of approved budgets that are, you know, voted on by all the bodies. So I, I just, you know, I think it's a round peg in a square hole regardless of how we look at it. And I think, you know, ultimately, maybe the decision is what's the right thing to do in the spirit of being inclusive and making sure we have representation from the community. But two, two quick questions. One, I assume that you've talked to others, but are there other towns with our form of government that are, you know, that'll finalize this process or that have come to the same or different conclusions that you have regarding how, how we work through this?
Well, each town, as you know, has a different charter than ours. And so that's why following what other towns are doing is not necessarily going to give you an answer. When we, we looked around and, and went to CCM and asked them for answers, and even Congressman Heinz, Heinz's office, you know, the answer is, it's pursuant to your charter. So that kind of brings us back full circle. So we can find out. I know, I think the City of Bridgeport, the, the City Council gave the mayor the authority to do what he wanted to do with it, something to that effect. John, maybe you know better than me. Other, others have gone to their city, the Board of Alderman, City Council, and I believe one may be going to their RTM, but I, I'm not certain of that. But again, that's, that's pursuant to their interpretation of the charter. And perhaps they're in the same situation we're in. I, I, I don't know firsthand.
Okay. And just my last question, very quickly. You said something before that caught my attention, and maybe I misunderstood it when, when we initially had these discussions. But you said the money had to be designated before December 24? So what does designated mean specifically? And I thought money had to be spent by a certain timeline versus designated. So can you help us understand that?
I could ask Mr. Schmidt to, to elaborate, but my understanding is that designated means that it, it's, must be like contracted for. You must, you must have, have a, a set plan in place for that money. You can't just have some general idea of what you're going to spend it on. It must be like for a particular project and contracted for, bidded, that whole thing. And then, of course, spent must be spent by 2026 for any such project. But Jared, direct me or elaborate on that for me, if you will.
No, I think you hit it right. Just the word that they use, the term that they use is obligated. So it's got to be obligated by the end of December, by the end of 2024. Right? And that's, that would be to have, to have legally obligated, to be legally obligated to spend the money. And then that has to be completely spent by the end of 2026.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So when I think of obligated, that's, you know, sort of encumbered, right, in, in kind of municipal jargon, which would imply a legal obligation or a contract. So, okay, that's it. Thank you, both. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Jim, for being here tonight, and thank you for all the research you did on a very difficult matter to research without clear cut things. And I will tell you, I've heard, you know, Ms. Matola and I also heard Ms. Charlton talk about what we'd like to do or whatever. But, you know, I've always found in all the town attorneys that I've known before, you guys got to call bolts and strikes. And you got to call it the way you see it. And I understand that you also, and I presumed that it would have to go to the RTM, but maybe it won't. I mean, I've been clear on every board I've ever been on, whether it be the RTM, the Board of Finance, or the Board of Selectmen. Something doesn't give our board power to do something, don't hand us the power. I will not vote on it. Because I just, we got to follow charter, got to follow state statute. That's what it is. So I'm going to rely on you, just like I've relied Stanton Lesser, even on things that I didn't agree with his legal opinion on. A number of things I didn't agree with his legal opinion on, but I accepted it as the legal opinion. A number of things I didn't agree with, but I accepted it as the legal opinion. As the legal opinion, the town of Fairfield, because that's what it is. So um continue to do whatever you gotta do new, do, but I I I understand the difficulty you have. But I just ask that you follow the law, and this, we all respect, whatever that is, and respect the powers we are. Like, just going to charter, pursuant to state law. Um, I have a couple of smaller questions, and and you might not have been able to do the research. So if you haven't, that's fine. But if the procedure goes that these items are voted by the Board of Selectmen and then come to the Board of Finance. First of all, is it your opinion that we could vote on them as a whole? Or if somebody wanted to make an amendment, they could make an amendment, correct?
Yes, I think we 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 discussed that already.
Yep, yep, I just wanted to be clear. Um, so that's, that's one. Number two, certain things could change over time. Like, you know, let me just grab a couple of small ones, just as examples, but not necessarily thinking that there's gonna be problem. But the Rooster River, when they do all the architectural work, engineering work, set it up the bid, we get the bid. It could be more than what we have here. And if it's over, we'd have to find another funding source, because we've only aligned a certain amount of money if we vote on it. Both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance vote on this, correct?
Yes, again, as I said earlier, you would be back to that same situation that exists in in separate requests with different departments. I if they don't have enough for a building committee, they do what? They come back to uh the administration, the Board of Selectmen, and then it's on to you to find a way to fund that, whether it's bonding or uh contingency or surplus, what have you, exactly.
And the same thing goes, I mean, there's one item here, I think it was for a stage for the his uh History Center. They're gonna try to privately raise, I don't know, four hundred thousand dollars privately to add to the money that we'd be signing in pursuant to these federal funds. Um, but if they weren't able to raise that money, none of it, and comes to us like a year from now, we say, what's going on? Let's see, if we're not being able to raise some money, we're not gonna be able to do this. Now we have that amount of money, maybe it's a hundred grand, I don't know the exact figure, but sitting there. Would um the administration or the departments be able to come and now make, try to make an amendment of the first list that maybe we had voted on and come back to the Board of Selectmen again, and then the Board of Finance? Would that be the procedure as you see it now? And I I understand you might not have researched these, but that would seem to be my thought.
Yeah, I I think you raise an interesting point, but of course, it would be on individual or item by item basis, right? It wouldn't be on on everything. The 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 omnibus motion that I described is just to facilitate for the ease of the Board of Finance to address these these items, but you should consider them each individual. And but the the interesting point that you raise is, well, what happens to funds that are designated that are not fully used and expended? That's, that's, that's the interesting question to me. And and my guess is that if you have time, still before December thirty first, twenty twenty four, you can then find other uses for those funds which have not yet been expended, which may be reason for you not to wait until the last minute to uh to begin these projects.
I I I I agree with you actually on that. I I don't think we could wait till the last minute. I think we're gonna have to have some deadline where if we're gonna use it or lose it, and there's a question of using it, you know, the first select woman and possibly then the Art uh Board of Selectmen are gonna have to start saying, maybe we should reallocate this someplace else, so that the town gets the full use of the funds before we potentially miss a deadline and don't use it. So is that what you're basically saying, that what you just said? Did I summarize that enough? Are we on the same page on that?
Yeah, I I just think that the that we we worry about, you worry about um not having enough money for some of these projects, but there's the flip side of that as well. I just want to to point that out. And the, as long as you uh have gone through to completion on on several, if not most, of the projects, say by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, then uh you'll know where you are then and possibly have additional funds with which to uh to use for purposes that are appropriate under ARPA.
Thank you. Um, that's really all the questions I have for you tonight. I will make a general statement in regards to where we're going with this and the list. I mean, and I and I acknowledge that the list has been changing, but hopefully it's not gonna be changing. I I think our, whenever it comes to us, is our body. We're gonna have to have a full, vetted conversation on this. But to me, this list is a very thorough list of things that spreads the money out throughout various parts of town. Things we've known about for twenty years. Some of the things are for to assist some of the charities in town that are still doing COVID work. There's things that benefit benefit economic development. But it's a wide range. Um, I really thought when we first were gonna get the list, they might be more directed at specific projects, like a couple. Ever, but um I think the first select woman was was smart in spreading out the projects and getting the most bang for our buck. That will benefit our taxpayers in different ways, because we don't all use the same things. We don't all like the same things. But I think, you know, and then this list, to me, if it was my list, I might cut some things. There's definitely things I love, and there's definitely things that I I would probably not vote on on an individual basis. However, like most government things, when money comes in, and I'm sure our congressmen and senators for our state see that um when they're voting on some recent stimulus money. You know, there's things that you have to vote on that you don't particularly agree with, but you wanna get out of the question. And that's the way I'm gonna kinda look at it. Um, if we're gonna really go through this, though, and pick apart individual items, then I guess, I guess everything's up for grabs then. So I know if I see that presumably going, then I'm gonna take it that it's the intent of this body just to, you know, pick and choose the exact ones you want, and maybe add other ones that we don't know about. And I would hope that we wouldn't get there, but we'll, we'll see what happens. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
I I just want to remind you, Mr. Walsh, that you can't add things that aren't on the list.
Correct.
Right, I just wanna make that clear.
You're right, I appreciate you reminding me of that, Mr. Baldwin. So it would basically be, we might not use all the money. And then it would be back to going back to the first select woman and the Board of Selectmen. And maybe we could suggest other projects at that point in time, because the sum didn't pass. And they would have to reprioritize and figure out how, what their proposal would be to spend the money.
Correct, yes.
Thank you for pointing that that inconsistency out, I'd suggest.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Testani.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hey, Jim, how are you?
Good, how are you, Jack?
Good, good. Just have a quick question, um, because I'm not as familiar necessarily with Fairfield and the charter. I just was curious, I know you mentioned this statute earlier. Have you received any guidance or is any guidance available to you from the state? That's number one. Number two, could there be a state statute passed that would then override our town charter?
So so to reiterate, Jack, uh, there is no guidance from the state or the feds other than you're supposed to follow your charter and your your processes.
And you don't see that changing?
No, definitely not. And 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 we are following uh the charter, which really just references the state statutes that give the authority to this board to make those transfers upon the request of a department. So we are, we are referencing the uh the statutes in that sense.
Okay, so it's in your opinion that next week, next month, this, the the state legislature is not gonna meet and state senate and state reps and go, okay, we wanna pass a a law now that's gonna supersede town charters, whether it's Fairfield or anywhere else, and say now everybody has to conform to the way the ARPA money's gonna be allocated with this statute?
Yeah, I I think that's highly unlikely. The horse is out of the barn. Municipalities are already spending money, they've already passed uh their own items.
Great, I got it. Thank you, appreciate it, Jim. Thanks, thanks also for coming tonight. Good to see you.
Good to be here, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Yeah, I would think the state legislature would want us to far away from that. So, okay, uh, any further questions for now for Mr. Baldwin? Okay. Jim, can you stay around for a few minutes, just in case?
Sure thing.
Thank you very much.
I'll be here, I'll spare you my uh my visual and my voice.
Okay, so as a board, uh, we submitted questions to the to the administration and and they responded. Uh, admittedly, we got the question, the answers back today. Uh, they received them late last week, and then we had Memorial Day, or I'm sorry, Labor Day, and um so they got the uh, the answers back to us as fast as possible. So I just wanna, I wanna open it up to the board, and we can go, we can go through this and the questions that you asked, if you want more detail. Uh, we could take our time if you need to look through it. So if there's any questions on any line item or any response that we received, let's please take this time to go back to the, to Ms. Cupcheck or Mr. Schmidt and uh and ask for more detail. Ms. Marmian.
Thank you. I have, I have uh two questions, but I'll start with the um, the plan for the stage and the and the uh restroom facilities at the History Museum. Ms. Cupcheck had mentioned that there was a plan that the um History Museum had put together, that it existed. Uh, I I think a question came up either at your um your presentation initially back in July to the um town officials, or maybe it came up uh at the Board of Selectmen meeting. I I don't remember, but you said there was a plan. I'm wondering, can you, can you send us that plan so we can take a look at it? I know it has to be shovel-ready to be approved, and I I, people had requested more detail, and you said they had already put together a plan. So does the, do you have a copy that you can forward to us through you, Mr. Chairman? She can forward.
I'll have a, I'll have the CFO, who's taking a note on that. Um, but as Mr. Walsh indicated earlier, they have, um, and I don't know if, uh, Michael Jaley, it would just replace the current stage they put up every summer and then take down. So it would be a permanent stage, and it would be bathrooms. Uh, but again, they asked for the entire amount, and I offered a little less than half uh to meet them, and they are going to fundraise for it. But I could ask uh Mr. Jaley to send you whatever he has.
That would be great, thanks very much. Uh, the other question I have goes to the um, the uh electric cars. Uh, you did provide some analysis, thank you for that, in um, we had asked for more detail on the electric cars. Um, I'm looking for more detail, I think maybe other members are as well. This came up, some of this came up with replacement of the fleet uh during the budget discussions, not this past one, but I think the prior year. Um, and we had, we had asked for some detail on um the usage of the cars by town employees. I I know a number of them use the town cars, existing Crown Victorias. And we had kind of asked, you know, are there any um alternative ways of looking at how employees use the cars? You know, could they use their personal car and then charge mileage? Would that be more cost-effective? Um, how, yeah, how many cars do we actually need? I know you're looking for replacing fifteen, but that level of analysis, um, I think would make us more comfortable to know that this would be a good investment. I fully support, you know, replacement of old kind of um cars with uh electric, more efficient cars. But I I don't, I don't think we have the level of analysis yet that we truly need. Has that analysis been done? And can you share that with us?
So thank you, Sheila. Um, as I indicated, uh, I may have mentioned this during the presentation or in my answers or both. Um, and I did talk about it at the Board of Selectmen meeting. So the proposal is to uh purchase fifteen electric cars, the stations that charge them, and upgrade the electrical service to accommodate them here at Independence Hall. As far as how the town manages, um, who will drive cars and won't drive cars, that's really an administrative decision that's made by me and my administration. So currently, you know, we have our building inspectors, our zoning inspectors, our health department inspectors who use the car, uh, their cars very regularly. Um, and then there's some shared um cars. We're looking at that, but this proposal isn't contingent upon that analysis. And I can understand that you, you would like to know more about that. It's probably something that should have probably been looked at many years ago, um, regarding car usage. Um, but we are going to look at that. The currently, there's, I think, over thirty cars being used uh by employees. We just wanna purchase fifteen um electric cars. Number one, we think that it's a good message for our town go- town government to be sending to the community that we are using green uh energy and clean energy. So when a building inspector shows up, or a health inspector, or zoning inspector shows up on a um, at a residence home or at a job site with an electric car, it sends a message that we do care about the environment, and we're putting our money sort of where our mouth is. And obviously, those Crown Victorians are, um, I mean, I don't know really any other ways to describe it. Um, they're pathetic, and they're gas guzzlers, they're very bad for the environment. Um, and quite frankly, they're ugly. Um, uh, it's not to replace the entire fleet. Uh, we are working on that sort of thing about how it's part of my overall um efficiency and modernization of town government, uh, but this is only fifteen cars.
Right, and I appreciate that. I think doing the analysis of who actually uses the cars and when would be, would just give us more oomph rationale, because I'm looking at fifteen electric cars, why not twenty, why not ten? You know, if you're replacing the entire fleet, would these fifteen cars do it based on usage? What what are the energy savings that you're looking at by using the electric cars? A a little bit more meat on the bone. I understand that's an administrative decision, but um it would help um kind of support the rationale for this amount of ask uh is what I'm getting at.
Right, it's not as much, it's not as many cars as we currently have used by town employees to pass. Um, I would like to reduce the amount of cars used. Um, I would not, uh, I'm not inclined to reduce, uh, uh, take away a car from a building inspector or zoning inspector or health inspector, because they are out all day long doing those things. So, but there are other things. Uh, we do have our engineering department out, they use a van, we wanna get a couple hybrids. So we, this is not to replace the entire fleet. But if the administration feels that we do need additional electric cars, because we um have made a determination, for example, that um we are gonna reduce uh our employee use of cars, but we still need maybe five more. Um, we will then come back and ask for that money uh during the operating, during the regular budget process. But fifteen is, I think, a low number, uh, or a midway number. It's half of what the cars we're using now. And um, I don't, I guess that's really the only answer, the rest of the answer.
So 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 Ms. Cupcheck, perhaps just a short write-up on which departments utilize the cars and and for what purpose?
I think we did give that in um during, I think we sent that information in a backup. I think you have it in the back, in your backup there.
It's in the backup.
Who uses what? It is, you have it, right, Jim?
Yeah, it's in the backup.
Oh, and the fleet, you had, you had, there was a um
Like this spreadsheet?
That the town fleet, it's in that?
Yeah, it's broken up by department. It's broken up by which department you use.
And if you look at it, you know, the way I
Is the vehicle overall assessment summary? Okay.
Correct.
What page is that on?
What page is that on?
It was its own.
Page 31 and 51 of our backup.
31 and 51?
31. Of the 51 pages of backup, it's page 31 of the PDFs that were supplied to us as backup.
Thank you.
So like the building, and zoning, and health, they use their cars all the time, and some do not, then we have a mix of usage for others. And we are definitely analyzing that.
Okay, this signs it out, this signs it out pretty well. Thank you. Ms. Marmian, before I move on, any further questions?
No, I'll take a look at this, I appreciate it.
Okay, take a look, and if you have further questions on it, we'll come back to you. Mr. DeWitt, and then Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. Just a follow-on about the cars. The first select woman said something that resonated with me, right? We're not, we're not quite sure what the right number is, right? There's, I think we would all agree, and would have agreed years ago, that there are too many cars in the town fleet, right? So, I would rather shoot it a little bit low at 15, than say, going at 30, because let's not forget, there's a maintenance, you know, on these cars afterwards. So, if 20 is the right number, I'm perfectly fine with the number, with this educated guess, I'll call it a 15, and five working its way into the budget in the near future, but because if we went in full bore, replaced all the 30 cars we have today, it'd be a lot harder to get rid of them to add on to it. So, that's kind of my position on the cars.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Walsh?
Yes. First of all, Ms. Kupchak, thanks for supplying the backup. I think that town fleet page and a half, page and a half, talked about, very helpful to see that. I kind of agree with Mr. DeWitt. Heard this from Mr. Brummer before, that you want to get the number of town cars that are used as part of the fleet down, so I'm glad we're not going up to just the 28 cars. Two or three are which in DPW garages right now being repaired.
Right.
That we start out at some kind of median number, and figure out what we need some period of time. My next thing is a question, only because I've seen some of these town employees in the morning after a snowstorm digging their cars out, like up two feet of snow. And it also gets to the charging station. So like, at the where the Parks and Rec is now, we had put in one of those solar covers, and the company comes in, and they put the covers, they put solar on the roofs, and they pay for the entire installation, and they pay for the charging stations. Obviously, I think we'd need more charging stations that are there now. Obviously, it'd probably be maybe not great, more expensive. But it seems to me is whether we could get somebody to do something similar, if we had to pay, and get the added benefit that our car, that our electric cars that we have would be covered, maybe lasts a little longer, and maybe the covering wouldn't cost us more, so that these town employees who are trying to figure a job don't have to go out there with shovels, and have a worker's comp claim for hurting the back or something. Has that been thought about, or?
I think that's, I like that. I mean, I don't know how much that costs, Jim, but I, God, that would be really cool to have something like that at Town Hall. I agree. But I don't know how much it costs. Well, we're going to investigate it, because sometimes those solar companies will install it, you know, there's like, I know there's deals and stuff, but we're going to investigate all of that. I mean, maybe we could get it for I know they did it up at, you know, the high schools, they put the solar arrays there, and I think they made kind of deal with the Board of Ed, so I'd have, we'll have to look into that a little bit more, but I, that is a good idea.
Yeah, I thought the thought was that they threw off some extra electricity, and they were then able to, you know, that's what paid for them putting this structure up. Now, I'm not sure how it will work with, you know, whether there'd be a battery pack, so if our cars are on the road all day, and then they come back at the end, there's not a lot of sun, maybe at four o'clock whenever they get back, but it'd be just something to explore. It also might be able to buy a slot for one or two spots for somebody who's visiting Town Hall, who has an electric car that's running out of charge, to plug in for an hour or something.
That's a good idea.
Just a thought when you're going through the process, I guess.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's stay, let's stay, let's just stay on the cars before we move on. I just want to make sure we cover the car the car questions and answers. Ms. Marmian?
Thanks very much. I just, I'm looking at the backup, and again, I appreciate it. And again, I'm trying to look at an overall strategy for what we're trying to do here, and I get that you're still doing some of the analysis in terms of who's using what, but like if I look at some of the annual mileages on these Crown Victorias, I mean, for some of them, they're 200 miles annually, multiple ones, others, it's 450 miles. So I'm just kind of questioning, you know, how many cars do we need? I think we need, from my perspective, we need an overall plan. The strategy comes first, and then you plug it in. I'm not disagreeing with Mr. DeWitt. I think that we need to, I think it's a great idea. I just don't have any strategy in terms of, you know, why 15, why not? When I look at the cars that we do have, and they're not necessarily being used. So it's just a point, again, I think we need, I'd like to see more strategy, if possible, in order to like fully get behind the number of cars you're requesting, and then that specific budget line. Thank you.
Well, again, even though it's a small number of miles, you've got to remember, it would be inefficient to have a building inspector come back here and switch off with someone else. That would slow our entire inspection process down for our businesses and residents for trying to do additions and such. Those guys are out all day. Now, maybe they go to three houses on one street, maybe they don't move that much, but they need to each have, those are, those are money generating operations, zoning, and building, those, and our health department is out inspecting all the time. So those guys definitely need their cars, and we're doing an analysis. That's why we only asked for the 15, because that covers pretty much those daily operators. And then we're going to look more closely at the other ones that maybe don't use cars that often, and how we can incorporate some sharing, possible personal use cars.
Okay. Any more questions in regards to the cars? So we all right. How many cars, how many cars do we have? Did I hear, remember, Mr. Brummer saying 300?
There's 28 at issue.
Well, I mean,
No, in total.
Right, I mean, overall.
About 300. And there's 28 cars in this fleet that we're talking about.
Correct.
And you're looking to replace, you're looking to bring on 15, and then retire about 15, and retire as they get older, and they're out of use, and get rid of the high-maintenance ones. The ones you've labeled, you've labeled poor.
I mean, for example, seven inspectors alone in the building department, you know, so there's, you know, there's guys out all the time, health department, zoning. So we're trying to cover those guys because they are all the time, and then make an assessment about our needs after that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Matola?
Can you, on the quality of light, the traffic lights, the questions I have after reading this is, first of all, you talk about you want to upgrade traffic lights in major town intersections, and to me, most major town intersections involve state roads. So I guess my first question, if you don't know the answer tonight, that's okay, just get it in the next couple of weeks. If there's a traffic light at Black Rock Turnpike and Stilson Road, the major traffic light there, who's responsible for that light? Is that a state responsibility to replace that light? And how about the lights up and down the post road? It's a state road. So, can we get some clarity on that? And the other question I have is, and once you answer that question, I would think you would be able to tell us which major town intersections you're talking about to replace some of these traffic lights. And maybe they are the traffic lights up and down the post road, or in Black Rock Turnpike, just unclear. And can you, can you give us an idea of what $1 million gives us? 10 traffic lights, five traffic lights, 20? Just a ballpark figure. I think we need a little more clarity on that, that's all.
So, it's in the, it was in the backup.
If it's in the backup, I apologize.
Bucky spoke about this. Okay, so, in the backup, it says, the, so the way Bucky explained this to me is, it's sort of, it's an engineer gets a gauge to determine the most vulnerable locations, and prioritize our projects for design improvements. So it would be standardized of controllers and other components, new mats, arms where needed, centralized management of operations, and designed to facilitate future technological improvements. So for example, like, like let's just say, you're coming on grass here, you know, and the lights, it's like lights, 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 like they're not coordinated. The accident that happened down over at the intersection of Commerce where the apartment buildings are, like these, it would be an analysis. It actually costs more money, and Bucky talked a lot about this, because he ran the Parks Department at Bridgeport, and he also was a project manager for Aquarian, and he worked at Trumbull. He talks about, they come in and they assess all your traffic lights, then they give you advice about, okay, these ones don't work well during these times. They're backing up traffic, and they're not coordinated, they're not synchronized. So it's really a whole overall plan, and this was just the first piece of it. And it seems like a really good idea to put some money towards this, and get that design work done, and start focusing on these main traffic areas, and obviously, Bill Hurley's very engaged in this too, on the engineering side of it. But obviously, where we are meeting cross-sections where the state is, we would be working with them as well. But this wasn't for the whole thing.
So Brenda, is this, is this $1 million, is this more of spending $1 million for a study and a plan, or actual equipment, and so on and so forth?
Well, it's to
I think it's a good idea too, don't get me wrong. I just want to understand it better.
Right, and I can, you know, there is, like I said, there's these intersections, the 15 intersections are ones that we maintain. But I can have Bucky send a little write-up to Jim Brown, and he can share it with all of you guys, if that's helpful.
Perfect. That's what I need to see on that.
Yeah, but he explains it a lot better than I do, and when he explained it during, because we had, let me just tell you, hundreds of hours of meetings, putting this list together. You know, it sounded like something that our whole town would really benefit from, as far as traffic and safety.
That's fine. I just wanted to understand it better. Thank you. Look forward to getting that.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Back to the board for further questions, comments on the, on the feedback that we've received from the administration. Or anything that we'd like to see, I hear Ms. Marmian about the cars, anything we'd like to see in addition to what we're seeing? Mr. Matola?
So I think I know the answer to this, but I want to make sure that I'm satisfied. The money, the proposal for the wakebin, boys and girls, call it the $60,000, it's understood, I take it, that this is a one-time payment, a lack of better term, a grant for them from the town? Because it looks like they're going to use this money to run programs, that's all.
Right, to add to their programs. And, you know, just to be clear, you know, we've got a lot of proposals here. I'm going to massage this. I got some feedback from here and there, so you know, it, the list might slightly change when I bring it to you on the 21st. And I got a lot of good feedback from our community. You know, obviously, I tried to promote feedback from the town through the newsletter, and I put it, you know, very clearly, you know, please send me an email, tell me, tell me what you think, and here's our list, here are the videos of our meetings, to get a sense of it. So I may, I may tweak it just a little, John, but any nonprofit that receives was told very clearly, this is a one-shot arm, you know, one shot in the arm, and not dead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Back to Ms. Marmian.
Thanks very much. This is more about process, and it's a question to Mr. Brown, and then to Ms. Kupchak. So we're moving the quarterly review meeting that was scheduled for the 21st. We're moving that to the 29th, and then we're going to be having more discussion, and then potentially a vote on these items. And then we're moving the capital planning workshop to another date, is that correct?
So, so, on the 20, on the 21st, our quarterly meeting was scheduled. And we're looking to vote for this list as presented, or whatever memos it might be, on the 21st as well. So, and the capital planning workshop was scheduled for the 29th. That was going to be moved anyway, because there's, there's, there's department heads need more time, the Board of Ed can use more time. So that might, that's going to move from the 29th regardless. Now, my concern is that with our quarterly meeting, there's a lot to go over. It's end of the year, we need to go through the Board of Ed, there's a surplus we need to address. And I don't want to get to this vote and further discussion at 10:30 at night. There may be members of the community that want to speak to it, they may want to weigh in. And so my concern is the length of time, and the length of the meeting, if we try to combine these two items. So what I like to do is move the quarterly meeting that's scheduled on the 21st to the 29th, and on the, on the 21st, to have this item that we're discussing tonight on the agenda, and really, that's it. Maybe something else comes along, I don't know. And deal with this item only on the 21st, and give it, maybe it doesn't take long, I don't know, but give it the time it's due, let people that want to call in, give them the time that they may want to make public comment, and we're not rushing through the quarterly meeting, and we're not trying to rush through this. Ms. Marmian?
Yes, I, thank you for that clarification. My only concern, Mr. Brown, is that one of the questions that we had asked the administration was, can you kind of put into perspective for us the funding, I'm going to read the questions for the public, just, it's on page, sorry, I think it's page 25 of the backup. There was a question we had asked, it's from the Democrats, and we had said, I'm going to read it. "We would like to understand the administration's strategy with respect to the ARPA and its impact on future town budgets and spending decisions. For example, for capital items, is the administration's intent to simply move up non-ARPA items on the waterfall chart to replace those that are now being covered by this funding? If yes, what items? If no, is it the administration's intent to reduce bonding for next year's budget, thereby reducing future debt service costs?" In other words, we wanted to kind of understand how this fit into the budgeting, the waterfall, et cetera. The answer from the administration was, "The administration is intending to discuss all these items during the capital plan workshop and subsequent meetings with the Board of Finance. The administration is hopeful that this will reduce debt service and/or allow other important projects to move up on the waterfall." So I appreciate the response. My concern is that we're going to be voting on these items, it appears on the 21st, without getting context until after our vote, which would be the capital planning meeting on the 29th. And to me, and I know, on the one hand, you can't put it into the waterfall unless you have a vote, but But on the other hand, we're going to be missing perspective on where this fits in to the waterfall and the budget. So it's more a comment or discussion. I don't know how other people feel about that. But I feel like it's, again, it's putting the cart before the horse a little bit in terms of having a strategy or an overview of how this affects our budgeting process.
Okay, budgeting process.
If I could just respond to that, you know, I don't, it's not solely up to me about how the waterfall is modified or changed. That's really a Board of Finance function. And that's why I responded in that way, that after we vote on the items, the ARPA money, then we go to the capital workshop, and you guys, along with me, you know, we make decisions about, hey, this thing got passed. The Rooster River is now off. Playgrounds are off. The bulkhead at South Cor is off. That's a community decision, you guys. You know, that's a decision that you guys choose to make. And then as far as the operating budgets go in the future, I mean, you guys have a lot of power there. And that will be decisions you'll make during those periods of time. You know, what you want to bond, how it's reduced our debt service to a certain extent. So, you know, it's not, that's, you know, not up to me. That's up to all of us as elected officials in town. Depending on what gets approved and what we're going to end up using the ARPA fund for.
Mr., thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Mr. Dewitt, do you have a follow-up?
Sorry, thank you. I actually, just to Ms. Marmian. I think if we had the waterfall chart before the ARPA, I think that's putting the cart before the horse. You know, this is, there are significant projects that will be coming off of the waterfall because of ARPA. And if we had the waterfall meeting tomorrow night, and all those projects were taken off, I know I would personally have a problem with that because we hadn't voted on it. So I disagree that that's cart before the horse. I think the other way is actually cart before us. I think we have to vote on ARPA before we do any other work with the waterfall. And by the way, the Town Board of Ed is not ready. They're not ready to have that discussion. So we could be into mid-October before they're ready to have that discussion.
Okay. There's something else too to it. And that is timing. And I'll just share this. I received an email from the Board of Ed from Mr. Papa George in regards to a project for the Roger Ludlow Middle School roof. And he wants to bring that project to this board in relatively short order because here's what vendors and contractors are telling him. If he does not get this funded prior to the new year or before, and, you know, there's a process to go through, what he needs to go through. The project cannot be completed in 2022, in the summer of 2022. And that is because of the lack of materials and because of the labor shortage. And we also have to worry about inflation. So I think the town has the same type of concerns where some of these projects, look, we need to be diligent. We need to ask for questions, but we also need to start the projects. And I agree with Mr. Dewitt. I didn't think of it that way, but I think you have a good point in what you said. Mr. Walsh?
Can I just point out, I'm sorry, Jim. Sheila, if you look at page 16 where we gave you the backup, the CIT stuff is listed where it is in the waterfall and what year it's listed in. So that might help you a little bit, just to kind of get a sense of where you guys had put it in the waterfall and what year it was plotted to be used. Sorry, Jim, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, thank you.
That's on, that's on the list, on the sheet, right here.
Yeah, page 16. It added that little thing there for you guys to help. So you'd know where it was on the waterfall, where it lies.
All right, thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Brown, when Mr. Papa George told you about this project, is this something they're planning on paying for with their ARPA money?
No, this is separate.
Oh, of course it is. Okay, okay.
This is separate. I don't believe so. Let me say this. I did not read.
How did it become an emergency all of a sudden that we never heard about? Is it on their waterfall chart for coming up this year? Is that what it's about?
Okay, I didn't dig into it. Here's my point with the email, is that he's being told, I'm sure it's probably set for 2022, or he wouldn't have brought this up. The point is, if, let's just say it is part of the waterfall. Let's just say it is, you know, in line. His point is that if we don't get it approved, the contractors are telling them, the vendors are telling them, we will not be able to get this project done for you next summer.
Okay. Well, I hear you, Mr. Brown. And I'm not trying, I know you don't have all the answers tonight, so I appreciate that. But he should better be prepared at our capital plan. See that as the number-one priority on his capital plan and everything else fall behind it if it's not already on there.
Well, it was important enough for him to send me an email.
Sure, yeah, no, I get it.
And I'm sure he'd like to speak to it sooner rather than later. And, you know, we'll offer him that opportunity. My point is, and I see it in my own business, is the shortage of material and labor. And therefore, it's affecting wages. It's affecting costs. It's affecting pricing. I mean, we're all living in one way or another. And so therefore, if we don't start to get the shovels in the ground, I think it's a legitimate, real concern that the prices we're looking at, if you don't lock them in. I've talked to general contractors. You know, our prices that we put out for general contracting business are good for maybe two weeks to a month. That's it. Because they don't know what the cost of materials are going to be in the near future. And if it's not, because then if it's approved, they can lock it in. They can make the purchase. They can seal it. But they're not going to seal it without a signed contract. And if they don't have a signed contract, the price might go up. And then they're going to say, okay, you thought it was $140,000. It's now $155,000. And that price only holds for two weeks. And that's the concern. I think it's something this board has to think about as we take a look at this. And that's in effect.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you saying that because, you know, as you know, this money didn't just come to Fairfield, Connecticut. It went to 169 towns in the state of Connecticut, and it went to cities and towns across the country. So it's part of the urgency. It's why we, you know, we took so much time to really vet our list because we wanted to just get out there. Because as Jim is saying, we're all aware of what's going on out there. And now that all these towns have millions and millions of dollars to spend, it's going to be more difficult. And that's why we want to move this as quickly as possible so these costs don't start skyrocketing and making it way more expensive than it should be, you know. So the quicker we get to it and get these contracts and start moving, you know, the better off for our community because we can get the most bang for our buck.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? And it's only 9:30. I want to keep looking through. It's early for Board of Finance time. Ms. Charlton?
There is a great tennis match on, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Charlton, to you.
Yes, thank you. And let me apologize in advance if this was answered in the materials. I left myself some time to review these materials today, but it wasn't long enough to get through everything. I wanted to ask about the paving. And, you know, looking ahead to the budget, I understand that we are backed up in paving. And I think if anyone's, you know, driven down Fairfield Beach Road or in the beach area, you can kind of see the impact of that. Clearly, we've got some catch-up to do. What I really wanted to understand is, what's the plan for the budget next year? I mean, I think the reason we're behind is, you know, we only budgeted a million dollars last year. The year before, we budgeted a million. We decided to bond a million. I don't even, I can't even remember if that bonding still happened. But we're behind. What is the plan for this year's budget? Are we committed to putting a, you know, a quote-unquote "normal" amount of paving maintenance dollars in the budget for fiscal '22? Because that was really my concern, that, you know, we got ourselves into this hole. You know, got this money from the federal government. We're lucky, we can catch up. But going forward, you know, it's really hard to add paving back to the operating budget when it's not there. So is there a plan to revert in this upcoming budget to a normal level of paving that's going to enable us to maintain the roads?
Yeah, I remember you asked this question during the workshop in July. And I had answered that, yes, I expect to always put paving money in the operating budget. But, you know, Lori, we were, I was talking about this with Chairman Brown and actually, Mr. Walsh, just on the side, way before we knew we were getting ARPA money, to talk about how putting actually money into the capital plan to do some catch-up paving. Because frankly, it's not, it's not the last couple of years. I mean, I remember when I was on the RTM, there was, you know, we need, we haven't personally, because it's expensive. Paving's expensive. And I know that this town had made a decision regarding bonding on paving. I don't personally agree with it. But other towns bond for their paving. A lot of towns do. And so we, I think, kind of got into this thing where we don't want to hit our residents with huge tax bills. And so I think over many, many years, the amount of paving, you know, kind of stayed at a smaller amount. And I think now we're in a position where, you know, our residents are saying, hey, our roads look like hell. And, you know, they do. So the plan that Bucky talked about, having that, that you guys approved, that whole assessment of all of our roads, that's going to be coming in October, which I think is going to be perfect timing. Because it'll give us that assessment of all of our roads, where they are, what needs to be done. And then we can make, use this money towards this catch-up. And then I think, you know, I think we should continue to have a conversation about, hey, do we want to try to do some more catch-up? I don't know what that report's going to say in October about the conditions of our roads, but I think it'll be a good tool for all of us to have. And then, like, if we'll have a discussion then. But no, my intention is not to not put paving in the operating budget. This is for some, you know, catch-up paving. I wish we could do more on that.
Yeah, no, and maybe we'll need more. Maybe that's what the report will tell us. But I was more concerned about the operating budget. Because, you know, obviously, two years ago, it was at the beginning of COVID when we were trying to pass the budget. And then last year, we only budgeted a million, which at the time, you know, didn't seem right to me personally.
Yeah.
And so even to get back to a normal level, which, you know, what you're saying is, you know, that hasn't been quite enough over years. We're still a million dollars short of that on a year-over-year basis. So my, you know, real concern was that we, you know, what does this mean? Are we looking to do something different going forward? Would it be your intent to do something different in terms of bonding paving? Or do you intend, once this catch-up is completed with whatever we need to do that, to, you know, revert, starting with this year's budget to sort of a normal level of maintenance that we've had, you know, prior to the past two years?
I'd love to do that, yeah. I hope this will be enough to catch up, but I am a sneaking suspicion that that report's going to tell us, no, you need more. So, you know, that's a discussion we're all going to have during the operating, you know. And it's going to all depend on where our priorities lie. And, you know, what we want to do and what our tax rate looks like too, so.
And just a quick question. In terms of, you know, we all know what's, you know, what the environment is in terms of all types of construction projects. And as it relates to paving, are, you know, what's happened to costs from paving? You know, are we getting, are we going to get less for our money than we've gotten in the past? Or do you have any sense of what that looks like?
I honestly don't. You know, I know gas prices are up, but, you know, listen, feel free to shoot Bucky an email and, you know, ask him what he thinks.
Well, can we?
I'm sure he'd have to answer, but.
Maybe that's something Jared can make a note of, and Bucky could send us that response, just like the other question.
Okay.
Because that's actually, I'm interested in that too. You know, how, you know, what do we get per mile as compared to? What's the cost per mile as compared to maybe a year and a half ago?
Yeah, and what is that three million going to get us?
They're high right now, so I don't know if that impacts it, but it might.
Well, I think oil affects it. So, yeah, I think it's definitely, I think, I'd be surprised if we don't find we get less for our dollar today than we did 18 months ago. But I think that's a, I think that's a good question.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Kupchak? Okay, I'm not seeing any. And, you know, we'll go with what we outlined. We have nine days to the 21st. If you have further questions, please don't hesitate. You can send them through me, and I'll get it over to the administration and write back out. And share with the, and share with the rest of the board as well. And I'll go back to you, Ms. Charlton.
I'm sorry, just one quick ask. I've heard from members of the public that have asked a lot of questions about the money that's going for the police department, for the tasers and the body cams. And I think most of the people on the board and a lot of elected officials have heard more information about that and have heard, and some attended, you know, the session that, you know, that the police leadership held. But I wonder if it wouldn't just be helpful to maybe take a couple of minutes at a public meeting to give a quick overview so that the public understands what's driving that. It is a very large dollar amount. And I think, I think it might be helpful. So just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
But no, I appreciate that. Actually, they did a second, the police had asked and down again last night. Five RTM members went and participated. But we had a good showing down at the fire training school. I actually shot tasers with Moderator Wackerman, side by side together. It was pretty cool. And we went through the whole process. But actually, I let her go first. It was fun. I asked the chief if I could get a taser, but he said absolutely not. So this actually saves us. This actually, you know, when it first came up, I thought, oh my God, that's a lot of money. But when I looked at the whole thing, and then when the chief did the presentation during the workshop and then all the backup, I realized how much money this saves us in our operating budget. And having a 10-year without any costs associated with any of these dash cams, body cams, and tasers, and these things, they wear out. And there's a, I can have a video sent to all of you. I don't know if you've gotten it. Did the chief send anything to you? There's some really good information. But are you suggesting, Lori, something for the public?
I just think maybe, you know, I think we've gotten a lot of information that the public doesn't have, and enough questions are coming up. There's just something very brief explaining, you know, the long-term cost savings, the police accountability bill, how that ties into our requirements. You know, I just think it would be helpful because the same questions keep arising. And I, you know, it is a large amount of the overall money that we're getting. I personally am supportive of it. But I, you know, I think it would be helpful if others, you know, if the public had an opportunity to either comment or understand it better. I think most of the people that have been, you know, the elected officials that have been kind of taken through that information offline have come to understand it and are generally supportive of it. But, you know, there's still some questions. So, you know, something, a brief might be helpful.
I'm happy to send, well, a lot of this, I did put in a newsletter, all the ARPA and all the link for the public. And people did actually look at it. But I'm happy to send you something if that helps you. But I'm happy to send you something if that helps you answer some questions to anyone who's reaching out to you. But the chief was very, and Deputy Chief Okaradi were very generous with their time for anybody who had any questions, and always are. So if you want to direct them to the chief or to Deputy Chief, they would be happy to answer them. You know, they really are very excited about this, because they know they have to comply, obviously, we just said, the accountability bill. But also, it's to protect them, too, you know, to have these cameras on all the time, making sure that everything's documented, and that protects them as well as the public. And tasers, obviously, are a lot better than using a weapon, so, and they're required. These are required items, they have them.
Maybe something on their website.
Yeah, I could send you what we've been, you know, what we put in the newsletter, if that helps, and if you need a little bit more, just let me know. And then you can always direct them to the chief, because he loves talking about this, actually.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments right now? Okay, how about for Attorney Baldwin? Any further questions for Attorney Baldwin, including about the RTM, and any questions for him? Ms. Marmian?
Thanks, I just want to follow up with what Mr. Matola had requested, that I think it would be important for us to have legal opinion in writing in terms of the process that we should be, that he's recommending we follow, and then also as regards to the RTM, so that when we go to vote on the 21st, we, we have a good sense of the process. Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
Sure, that's, that's not a problem. In terms of your process, I, I think it's pretty straightforward, but I'm happy to do that. And in terms of the RTM, yes, it is, that itself is in process, because as we discussed earlier, it, there is, there's no simple answer. And it's very much one which is up to, up to how we want to handle it as a town within the confines of the, the law, as I best understand it. So I think that that's going to happen, most certainly. But I'm going to present that opinion with respect to the RTM, really, with the, share it with the, the RTM leadership, who we've already been engaged with. But for your own purposes, I will definitely just reiterate what I said tonight about your voting, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. So for the Board of Finance, as easy as, as simple as it might be, if you could put that down for us, and then, and then for the RTM, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Baldwin? Jim, thank you for being here tonight.
Good to have everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to item number six. To here, consider an act upon the draft minutes of May 6, 2021, May 18, 2021, June 14, 2021, July 19, 2021, and July 21, 2021. We'll vote on these separately, but we'll put them before us at once. Going to have a motion to put item number six before us. Ms. Charlton, seconded by Mr. Testani. So we'll take these one by one. We'll start with May 6. Regular, it was a regular meeting, Thursday, May 6. Any questions, comments on these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor for approval, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. We will go to our quarterly review minutes, draft minutes of May 18. Any comments on these minutes? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 That is unanimous. Special meeting, June 14. Draft minutes, any comments on these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Takes us to Monday, July 19. Now, it's a special joint Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, and representative town meeting about the American Rescue Plan Act project. Any questions on these minutes? I just, I just have one change I'd like to make, and that is, I was present at that meeting. So I'd like that to be corrected. I was quiet, I understand, but I was in attendance. Mr. Walsh?
Jim, I'd like to kind of amend that, because I was also present during it, not at the very beginning, but I jumped on at a certain point, because in reading the minutes, I remember what some of these people were saying.
Yeah, I was a little bit late, too.
I will admit that for whoever was taking the minutes, I was not present at the very beginning, but I think I jumped on in a way.
Right.
Might have been actually on my phone, but I remember many of these minutes from, I'd like to be listed as present as well.
Mr. Matola?
And I'm not sure how to say it, so I'm going to say it anyway. I was at the meeting from the beginning, but at some point, I had to leave, and I can't tell you when I left. So just want that for the record.
Okay. So we have myself and Mr. Walsh, we joined, but not on time, we're not sure the time, and Mr. Matola was there. But I, you know, John, I saw you, it was at the end. You, you were there pretty much the whole thing, but I.
That's fine.
Yeah, so you might have dropped off, but it wasn't too far before it was over. So with those changes, with those amendments, all in favor of these minutes?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Okay, Board of Finance, special meeting on July 21. Questions, comments on these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they are approved, that item is approved. Item number seven. Mr. Schmidt, this is for you. You've got to turn your camera back on. To here, consider an act upon any communications, do you have any for us? Oh, your camera is on, okay. Any, any, any communications for us tonight? The answer's no. Okay. For the record, he's shaking, he said no. Looks like they turned the audio off a little too soon. Okay, the only, the only after communications.
No, we have, we have no additional communication.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. It's what we already talked about, changing of the days. I'll talk to Mr. Schmidt and his carpenter tomorrow to make sure that gets out to the public. Seeing nothing else, item number eight. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Ms. Marmian? Were you motioning to adjourn, or did you have something else?
Mr. Chairman, I actually just wanted to ask you a quick question, which is, are there any plans for this board to meet in person, or are we going to continue with WebEx into the year?
Okay, so, good question, I'm glad you brought that up.
Second the motion.
I, I had every intention of getting together in person in September, but then when the, when the mandates for the mask came back, under the recommendation, I believe, of, of our Health Department, and, you know, the facts that he was looking at, if we met in person, we'd have to wear masks right now. I like to wait, just from my opinion, I'd like to wait until we don't have a mask mandate, and we can get together without wearing a mask for three hours. So once, you know.
And Jim, we sent out a memo to all the boards, and Jim got it as well, the chairpeople, that we were recommending people stay remote while the Delta variant is moving through. We just thought it was much safer, and we can still conduct our business, and it's just a safer way to, I think, operate. So that was a directive that came from us.
Okay, so with that, and that, and that's, that's why we have the mask mandate, right? Delta variant and... So, once that is lifted, we'll meet in person. I really hope that we do that before this term is up. Okay, any other?
I'll co-sponsor a, a motion with any time, Sheila, you want, so you know, you always have my vote on that.
I, it's more really for the public. I mean, I love doing the remote, but it, it just lessens the, I think, the participation.
I agree, I get it. I'd rather be in person as well, although you're right, this is easier, but for the public's sake, I believe it's, it's the right thing to do, as soon as we can, as soon as, as soon as this is lifted.
I would say even if we can just, as members, meet in person and take questions from the public over some form of.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jim, I couldn't hear you.
I'm saying, I, I would even be welcome to start it off at some point, after the first select woman thinks it's, and the Health Department thinks it's safe, that we start off just the members in public and take questions from the public for a while, so just opening the room with, take those questions verbally through audio or something.
You know, I just want to say, you could do it now. We do it at our Board of Selectment meeting, and actually, I've gotten really positive feedback from our community. They love watching this, they, they love participating throughout all the different boards with the phone system, and that was one of the things we included in the ARPA money, was to modernize some rooms to allow for members and the public to be able to attend remotely and in person, once we're able to do that. But your meetings can be open to the public. You know, you could even lift if you wanted, Jim, and have more people, you don't have to necessarily keep that in play to say they have to email ahead of time. You know, that's your prerogative, but.
The, the public is more than, more than welcome to dial in right now. They just have to let us know about a day in advance, so we can get them set up, and then we know who's going to call in. So that's why I think it's important that with the meeting on the 21st, we get this agenda out quickly and let people know, hey, this is the number to call in, and this is how you do it, and give them that opportunity. So.
Absolutely. And we'll help with that, too.
Okay, thank you. And then again, not to repeat myself, but just to be clear, as soon as we can get, meet in person, I'm all, I'm all for it. Okay. Moving on into item number eight, a motion to adjourn. Could I have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Walsh, seconded by Mr. DeWitt? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is, of course, unanimous. And everyone have a good night, and thank you.
Good night.
Good to everyone.
Good night, good night, everyone.
This session is no longer being recorded.